I now declare the meeting open of the Northwoodby Park and Recs District Board here at the School Board Room on Wednesday, April 26th. Called to order at 7:00 PM. And Commissioner Fort, I was going to ask you to do the minutes if you don't mind.
Okay. Do we have a...I guess not.
A what?
I need a piece of paper to write on.
Oh.
Usually I have a...
Here.
When do we open?
7:00 PM. First item on the agenda, meeting location. We need to find a different location for meetings other than at the pool. I don't feel safe. I think we are vulnerable to physical attacks at that location. And I just don't feel safe, and I want a different location. There is a cost involved, so it's going to need board consent. But after the events of the last meeting, I'm not willing to deal with that small room and potentially hostile crowds. So, I'm just telling you, not willing to meet there myself. So, go around the room, and you can put in your words, Commissioner Fort.
First of all, how are we safer here? There's no police officers here.
Yes.
Could we...
A policewoman, but yes.
Huh? Could she not be at the...
Police officer.
Police officer. Do we not have a police officer at the...
As soon as if there's a call that comes, we're going to lose her. But it's like, there's a little bit more physical separation between us and the crowd, and it's a bigger room. And I would say, I'm not sure that this even meets the requirements of what we want.
And the other thing I would say, the one individual who misbehaved last time, I think probably has learned his lesson, and I don't think that's going to occur again.
I'm not willing to accept that risk. Oh, sorry. Keep on talking, sorry.
Anyway, I mean, what's the excess...what's the increased costs?
Well, it was $45 to use the senior center, which actually was not good an hour. This is $20 an hour.
This is better. So, you're saying that you won't meet, you would just...you would not meet if we had it at the...
Correct.
Okay. I'm done.
Okay. Mr. Frosch. Or, sorry, Commissioner Frosch.
Soon to be Mr. Frosch.
That's right. Always to be Commissioner Frosch.
I am willing to hear recommendations, but, I mean, I don't foresee how this is any safer than what we already have at the pool. Matter of fact, I think we have more exits there than I think we have here. I mean, we got the office in the back that could be locked, but, I mean, still, I'm open for suggestions.
Mr. Singleton.
I feel the same way you do. You know me.
Commissioner Hofmeyer.
I'm not going to second-guess the way an individual commissioner is feeling. Everybody is entitled to their own feelings. However, no, I don't feel like any of us honestly felt threatened at the last meeting. I really don't. That's my opinion. I think moving the meeting would be the most ludicrous thing I can think of. And if I was a commissioner...
Which you are.
If I was a commissioner whose actions led to what happened...I mean, let's face it, the board's disrespect for the public is what led to what happened. I'm not saying it was acceptable because it shouldn't have happened. But that person since apologized, and slapping the table...I would venture to guess if we took a poll that every person in this room has slammed the door at some point in their life, and that table was just as much of an inanimate object as a door is. And honestly, slapping the table and calming down was probably...
Okay.
That's what I mean, though. The public's talking, and they get overtalked. I'm a commissioner, and I get talked over. I'm a commissioner. I'm a commissioner. I'm talking. I'm talking. I'm talking.
Could you stay on the subject?
I'm on the damn subject. This is what happened to them last time.
You need to stop.
Okay. Well, point of order, can I finish? Point of order, Chair, can I finish?
Yes, let him continue.
This is what keeps happening. This is what keeps happening to them. I'm the commissioner. You know, when I found out the meeting was moved, I found out this morning when I checked my email at 9:00 this morning. That was the first I knew about it. I'm the commissioner. How's the public supposed to know? This whole thing's a...this whole thing is a Bill Walker ruse to try to discredit people. I've had enough of it. You guys want to talk about this four...this three or four or five-year decline that the district's on? How long have you guys been on the board? You're a big part of that decline.
Point of order, Madam Chair. This has nothing to do with the meeting location.
There is no way. It has everything to do with the meeting location. As our executive director said last week, you know what, Commissioner? What difference does what I say make? You're not going to listen anyway. I'm done.
Commissioner Fort.
Well, first of all, he wasn't just simply pounding on the table. He rushed up to the table with a very angry attitude and started pounding and snarling at people. That was...that's not the same as slamming a door. So, it was threatening. So, I disagree with you on that, Shane. And that's...
And Commissioner Hofmeyer, you were not the sinistier of his ire. I was. I felt threatened, and it...at the time, it was like, not as threatening. Afterwards, it's like, what if it had been somebody else who felt passionately about something else that they didn't like, how I voted, how I...what I said? I'm sorry. I want more separation. And that little room, not going to do it. You were not the focus. I was. So, you don't even begin to know how I felt and how I feel. Okay. So, that's my...my question is, are we as a board going to approve moving the meeting from that little room at the pool to somewhere that's going to cost us money? And we'll have to look around and find someplace that suits our needs. It may be shifting around, and I apologize for that. But it's like, you know what? I did not do this.
Can we not get this on a regular basis?
I think we can. The problem is right now, tonight, we're limited. At 9:00, we have to be out of here. And we had to start at 7:00 because there was something else that was in here. So, we might be able to get this on a regular basis.
Would you like to change with me? Yeah. So, can you look into whether we can get this on a regular basis?
Okay.
So, that's...I guess that...do we need to vote on this tonight or make a proposal? Or can we just...
I guess...
I propose we have the ED looking to see if we can get this on a regular basis. If we can, this would be acceptable for me.
Okay. Is that a motion?
I guess.
Okay.
I know. The optics are such are horrible. So, I move that we use this...let's see. I move reuse this facility for our meetings.
Second? It's been moved and seconded that we use this facility for our meetings. Any further discussion?
Yeah. If anybody talks to the newspaper, hopefully, we can tell them it's because we want to use this stuff, because otherwise, the optics are pretty horrible. $20 an hour does seem like a fair price. I think the reason that we're considering moving the meeting is outlandish at best.
And I know that you applauded his actions, but, you know, the rest of us were threatened. Absolutely, you did. I saw it. You said, "I don't condone it, but I understand."
I do understand.
Because you're an idiot.
Again, four meetings in a row, thank you.
Yep.
You also called the public insane at the last meeting.
You don't need to speak well.
Yeah.
And then you apologized for it. You should consider what has led to this and maybe consider resigning.
You should also.
Absolutely not.
Yep. Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded...it's been moved and seconded that we use this facility for new meetings. And, Mr. Frosch, did you have anything else to offer on this?
No.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
We will do a voice vote. Commissioner Singleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Frosch?
Nope.
Commissioner Fort?
Aye.
Commissioner Hofmeyer?
Nay.
And the Chair votes aye, so it passes. All right. Next topic, board statement. I thought at this point, because there's a lot of misinformation floating around, we need to have a board statement that explains why we are going in the path we're going in. And I have prepared one, which I will hand out at the end of the meeting, and we will discuss it, vote on it at the next meeting, which is next Wednesday. So, I'm not going to hand it out now because I don't want you to read it in advance, just because you'll be reading it instead of listening to what we're supposed to talk about. But I think it's important that the board gets out ahead of some of the bad information that's floating around. Okay. Next, Resolution 0902. Our procedure has been, in the past...this is the one, 0902, we voted to rescind it. And our procedure in the past has been, if it was an important issue, if it was brought up on the agenda at the last...at the meeting, that we weren't going to vote on it. Someone said this was an important thing. I didn't think it was, but it's a gray area. So, I thought we would do is, you've had a week to think about it, because I went back to you and said, you know, "Let's bring this up again, just to be sure everyone thinks the same thing." So, I'm going to go by each one. If you have had a week to think about it, and if you have reconsidered your vote on rescinding it, say, "Yes," or "Yes, I've reconsidered," or the other answer is "No, my vote remains the same." Sorry. Commissioner Hofmeyer?
I haven't yet.
Okay. Commissioner Fort?
I have changed my mind.
You didn't vote. Commissioner Singleton?
I haven't.
And I have not reconsidered. So, it remains rescinded. Thank you. Okay. See how quickly we can get through stuff.
On the local topic, please.
Yep. That's right. You just angered me. So, levy ballot scheduling. We did...we voted and agreed to bring the levy up for the first time in November. And I was asked to discuss this again, and I know...usually, we make this a very...this is really important, so I just wanted to make sure everyone agrees. The reasons that we said we were going to bring the levy up for the first time in November and not put it on the ballot in August, it's never passed in August. It's proven that people don't vote in August. You get a lot more people voting in November than will vote in August. And I think a lot of people will take that extra step to vote in November than will do in August. And if they're not going to vote in August, that...we lose a lot of our positive votes then. I think we should approach the November ballot as if it already failed, need to concerted, get out the yes vote for the levy, and the other...we don't want to spend the money for two times at the ballot for the vote in August we know is going to fail. The downside, if the November ballot fails, which it could, even if it's the second time, we cannot get any levy money until January of 2019. So, that is a downside. But it's like, it's not going to pass in August. So...and I talked to Sheila Kreider about it, and she concurred with our analysis and agreed that it would be better to just wait till November and do a full court press in November. Commissioner Fort?
So, yeah, that 12, it's no more than two on the levy every 12 months, or whatever it is.
Yeah. That's the other thing.
So, that means if it fails in February, can we do it again in November of next year, or can we not?
I think you have to wait 12 months, so...
Yeah.
So, but...
That would take it another year.
Yes. But the...yeah.
So, what I'm saying is, yeah, it's probably going to lose in August, but it sort of doesn't... I mean, except for the cost, extra cost. It probably doesn't...it's probably no different than, you know, if it fails in November, then...then we're...so, I don't know. I've sort of changed my mind on this a little bit, based on that fact.
Okay. Currently, as it stands, we're going to just put it on the ballot in November.
I know.
So, do you wish...does anyone wish to make a motion to change that?
I would like to have it on the August ballot, as I mentioned the time before.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
I motion that we run our replacement maintenance and operations levy on the August ballot as well.
Okay.
I second.
Part of the reason that I think that...and I think, maybe there's a chance it will pass in August. You know, we really don't know what special items might be on the ballot that maybe could carry the day. But I do think, win or lose in August, I think that it could be part of a successful November. You know, I think it just...I think it gets people out their doorbell and sooner. I think if it does pass by a small amount or a large amount, or if it fails by a small amount or a large amount in August, I think...it seems like happy people don't vote sometimes. And if they see in August that they're...that what they want isn't going to be, they're like, "Oh, boy." You know, maybe then they turn out the door. So, that's why I feel that way.
I know. It's just a hard thing to make, to decide. We are on the levy subcommittee. We've gone back and forth on this.
I know. Yeah. I mean, the 40 percent, it's a 40 percent rule for August, but you're right. With more things being on there, maybe we will get 40 percent of last year's.
And I don't...I don't know that that's a reason...
Because if they don't get 40 percent, I guess none of it will pass.
I...yeah, I don't...I don't know that that's a reason why it's ever failed, but I have to admit, I...
I don't know either.
Since I didn't know that rule, I didn't look for it.
Seems like if it gets to the 60, it should have to.
Exactly.
August 1st, which would be the day we do, is also the primary. So, there is...there are other things going on.
Okay.
What other things are going on?
The primary. Whatever...
Oh, it's the primary? Oh, well, that helps. And also, isn't there the...is there...
There may be a fire difference.
Fire difference some second?
I don't know what's on it, because they have until May...like, we will now, if it's changed to August, and then everyone has to May 12 to submit theirs.
Okay.
And we can still make the push as if just we failed, push. So, maybe we'll make the first time passing in August. But...okay. So, anyone have any other comments?
I think it's a good idea. It increases chances.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded that we put the O and M billet...O and M levy on the August ballot. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I say aye. So, actually, all passed? Good. Unanimous. Okay. All right. Final topic, levy coverage. All right. I tried to get in my head what we're trying to do or what we're talking about. So, the question is, in our strained financial circumstances, with huge maintenance costs looming, what should we expect the levy money to pay for? What exactly are the maintenance and operations costs? And what should we expect program revenues to pay for? What are the program costs? So, we've had several answers from the Director, from Commissioner Fort, and Commissioner Singleton, and we talked about it a lot and never came to any conclusions, and we never had any motions on it. So, are there any motions on this topic today?
Well, first of all, I'd like to talk...mine wasn't a levy thing. You're right. I have three categories, speaking. I had mine that I put three expense categories. Direct lane hour expenses, program expenses, and MNO levy income...income, I should say, not expenses, income. Direct lane hour income, program income...or, I guess it is expenses, sorry. And MNO levy expenses. And you can go through mine, as the Director did a much better job of my handwritten crap. Sorry. It was pretty bad. But this is a lot easier to understand. You can go through it. I mean, we may have some disagreements, I'm sure, and even...you can even move them...that's why I want to discuss it, for example, the aquatics director. If everybody...if most people don't think the aquatics director belongs in the program expense and belongs in the MNO expense, I'm willing to do that.
Okay.
Let's move it over there. And the assistant aquatics director. Okay? It won't change the total number, but it'll increase the amount in the MNO levy and decrease the amount in the program.
So, would you like to go line through line?
Why don't we do that?
Okay. So...
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Why don't we make a motion on one of them and then use whatever that one is as the basis?
What...I'm not quite sure. Okay. I make a motion, we go line by line through mine.
That's not...so, Madam Chair, I mean that we accept Commissioner Fort's latest recommendation for overhead versus program expenses.
I second.
Okay.
All right. So, direct lane hour expenses. The reason I picked that is I was trying to simplify this as to what it would cost, what the cost would be for just somebody coming in and using a lane in the pool, you know? And I figured you have to have lifeguards, you have to have the CSS. And I put the Director's CSS in there because I think...I didn't think she did a whole lot more than sort of schedule. Anyway, so, you know, I could be wrong on that. But anyway, and if we took her out, that would really make the numbers not right. So, anyway, if we do mine, I think you can come up with...we could probably have a reasonable number laps swim. It would be about $6 an hour.
Okay.
And then, there's program expenses. So, if somebody comes in and uses a program, it would be the $6 an hour plus whatever their program expected expense would be. For example, it would be aerobic instructor. Now, we could take...we're going to take the aquatics director out of there and...
Okay. Do you want to start on the line by line of expenses?
Okay. I'm just trying to explain where it's...
Okay.
And the rest...and so, you know, right this year, I've figured it up, it's 60.8 percent of the expenses came...of the income came from MNO levy. Okay? I can divide that and show you very easily. So, that's where...anyway, I didn't do that, but anyway, the MNO...that's what the MNO stands for, is MNO levy is going to provide for all that.
Got it.
So, we put the...okay. So, going to unlock line by line, let's see. There was one thing up here, reconciliation discrepancy. That was...you didn't put that anywhere either. I wasn't sure where to put that either. That 182...minus 182.62, so I didn't know what that was.
It's over.
Yeah. Okay. So, it probably should be over in the MNO?
There you go.
Okay. The executive director, I put in MNO, including...I basically included all the payroll taxes and payroll...what was it? Processing. So, it came up to 9.65 percent for the...for him. Some of them, it's 9.65, some of them, it's 15 percent. So, not...so, his paid...his salary plus 9.65, anyway, it came up 64, 130. Actually, he did. And then, aquatics director, again, same thing, but that was 15 percent because...so, they have a little different payroll taxes and payroll process. It came up to 34.
Okay. If we're doing...if we're doing line by line, if we disagree, should we say...
Yep. So, that's the one we're going...if we...do you want to move that one over to MNO?
I would say part of it should be part of MNO, because the aquatic director is not just programs. They also do some stuff that has no...
He said he schedules lifeguards and so on and so forth.
Absolutely. And so, for that, the aquatic director should be part of program expenses. But she also does other things, like she takes safety swim or safety something out to the schools. And I had asked, you know, how much time that's...but the aquatic director does stuff like that that is, you know, I would not call it a program expense.
How would you divide it then?
How much of Jessica's time is spent actually doing stuff with the lifeguards versus the other stuff that she does that's going out to the schools and things like that?
I don't know if I can give you an accurate lifeguard scheduling.
Well, it's like, it's...she does the scheduling, she does the training. I know it's a lot. It's a huge part of her time, but there is other stuff that I know she does, and that's...
Well, yeah, she's the administrator of the entire aquatics program and stuff outside of the swim team. So...
Yeah. But that's what I'm saying, because the reason I sort of put her in programs and not...I mean, because, you know, I don't think she...except you pointed out, she does schedule lifeguards, and that's part of laps swim, so...
That's absolutely part of laps swim.
So, you're right. So, she's not strictly aquatic. She also has to do some...and I would put...so, I'd put that over in MNO, probably. Anyway, I would be willing to just put her completely in MNO, rather than trying to figure out what the percentage is.
Okay.
All right.
Can we...
And maybe you could...
Yes.
When we get all this done, you could reprint this out tomorrow and email us.
If we could back up to facility reserve, that should be MNO, I would think. We skipped it.
Oh, you know, you're right. We did. The facility reserve, which has zero, but make that...
Actually, I...you're right. I aim for $30,000 on average per year. I put that in there, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Madam Chair, just to clarify, I mean, we're just doing the categorization, right? We're not...okay.
And, yeah, and that should come from the MNO levy is what I figured. So, if you want to put $30,000 in reserve, yeah, I was going to do that at the end.
Yeah.
But I aim for $30,000 on average for the facility reserve.
But the actual amounts are not as critical as what segments it's in?
Yeah. Yeah. I think the facility reserve belongs in the MNO, and I thought I put that in my handwritten thing, but...
Okay. So, we both kind of agree aquatic director should be in MNO, but what do the other three of you feel like?
Again, I had no heartache with MNO.
And mine is in MNO.
Okay. All right.
Client service specialist, I think I'd leave that in lane expense hours.
Okay.
And he actually, if he...I think he...did he give you a corrected one? Oh, yeah, he did. And then, director of finance, I'd put that in MNO. Director of finance or client services, I'd put that in...client services, yeah. Director of client services, I'd also put in direct lane hour expenses. Aerobic instructor, I think that's pretty much a program. Lifeguard training instructor, because we're training lifeguards, that's a program. We're making money off of it.
Yeah.
We charge. It's a program, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
Kayak instructor, same way. We charge. We...so, that would be go under programs. Private lessons, we charge, and so, it would be under program expenditure. WSI instructors, just like lifeguard instructor, we're teaching the W, except it's a little higher class, we're teaching the WSI. We don't do that much anymore, because I don't think anybody qualified to do that anymore. Anyway, we used to. So, I left it in there as zero, just because in the future, it would be under program expenses, and we'd know that.
Exactly.
Uh, youth instructor, forty one, you know, and that's again, let's see, fifteen percent. The youth instructor is basically for the, doesn't that put, teaches the swim lessons?
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
I'd like to see that one moved to M and O. I have some logic there.
Okay, make a motion.
I, I move that we, uh.
Or don't, no, it's, it's, just, just say what you want.
I, I'd like to see the youth instructor moved to M and O, moving down a few lines. I would also like to see the lifeguards moved there.
Can we talk just about the youth instructor first? 'Cause it is, it is a, it's swimming lessons, and so it's, it's absolutely part of a program.
I feel like, I feel like one of the main reasons the levy passes is because of the, the swim school.
I'm not disagreeing with you at all. And, and I've often said, the one program that I think that I would be happily, you know, not, not paying for itself is swim lessons, absolutely.
I just felt, you know, teaching kids how to swim and safety are two big things.
They, they absolutely are, but I, I think it's still, it's a program expense, and then we.
Are we gonna give, are we gonna give classes for free then?
If, if we some, if somehow we're financially stable enough to do so, that would be very nice. It's not in the immediate future.
But it is a program, and it's like, we just have to recognize it's a program, here's what the expense is. And then we decide as a board, this program doesn't have to pay for itself. Let's, let's, you know, this is what it would cost to pay for itself. Let's cut back on the expense, or, I mean, not cut back on the expense, cut back on the expense to the parents. But I would still think it needs to be classed as a program expense.
That might be a really good idea on how to get the levy to pass, though. Free swim lessons, we might just do it.
Well, I thought we were trying to balance the budget.
I thought that's why we had an executive director, but it didn't.
Okay, so, but do you, do you see my reasoning on the swim instructor, or do you still wanna move it?
I'd like to see a move, but I, I'd like to see it, talking about other sides of that.
Does anyone else wanna move the youth instructor salary into M and O? Okay.
What's the difference, I mean, between keeping it program expenses and M and O? I mean.
Other than, the, the way that it's, it's gonna be used is that we'll say, this is one of the expenses of this program. And you add all that up and say, okay, based on this many lessons per year, this is how much the lesson should cost.
How much we charge.
Yeah, that's what it comes down to.
Basically saying how much we charge, but if we move it to the M and O, that's just saying that we can charge it, but we necessarily don't have to. Is that a correct statement?
If it's covered under their M and O, it's, it's no longer an expense under programs. So they no longer have to pay for that.
I got that, but can we still charge for it?
You can do anything you want, but I'm just trying to be consistent here.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just asking a question. I'm just saying, what's the difference of putting in the program expense and M and O?
You can put it anywhere you want, but I'm just trying to show why, when he goes and he tries to figure out, or when we try to figure out what we're gonna charge for each program, including N W A C. 'Cause that was, that was basically my whole motivation for doing this, is somebody asked us, how much, how much are they, what's the difference? How much, how much, what's her deficit? What do we consider her deficit, okay? I'll get to that at the end. But, so I tried to basically put programs, that's where I put things in programs. I considered coaching in the program, just like all these other instructors, I consider in the program.
I got you, I got, I'm tracking on that one right there.
If you take it out of there, put in, in M and O, that's not consistent.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm just asking a question here, like, okay, the M and O and the program, it seems like we can switch it to whatever we want right there.
You certainly can, but as soon as you do that, my logic, consistency of my logic goes away.
Can I try a different?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
So, so the, I think the real difference is that for anything that's in the M and O levy, we're not looking for direct recovery.
I got that, I got that.
We could still, okay, but.
We could charge, but we don't have to, because it's not paying for itself.
Or the other way that you could look at it is we're handed a fixed check amount from the county, and, you know, every year. And whatever we absorb from that, we're not expecting, you know, we, we have things we have to pay for, right? And so, and so what he's trying to do is allot the things that that money will go to pay for.
I get you. I'm, I'm, I understand where you're both.
If you move it over to M and O, N W A C can certainly say, well, why can't we move coach over to M and O?
Now, here's my logic right here. So I understand program expenses and I understand maintenance and operations right there. That's two separate things, one right there. Program is you're getting something in return because it's a service that is being provided and such right there. So we're gonna get a return on whatever services that we offer. Maintenance and operation is just basically a check, say, hey, this is operating expense, maintenance, operating expense that we have to do that we're not going to get a return on. I got the, the two just right there. I, I'm just saying that with the program expenses and the M and O, we have a lot of leeway here to help both the board, the public and everybody else here. If we move it to the M and O, frankly, because if we keep it in the program expenses, we say, okay, the, the public is going to pay for these services right there. Other than if we put in maintenance operation, we don't have to give money for this. So this gives Northwood Beach Parks and Recs some leeway to help out the public in case something is needed, okay? We're saying like, free swim lessons for, okay, something's going on, a, just for, for anything that happens, let's say, like, the community is pretty much, uh, let me rephrase this. You have something happen in the community that people cannot pay for swim lessons anymore because of something happened, some people lost their job or something like that, something closed down that affects a majority of the people. This is where it gives us a leeway to say, okay, something happened with this group of people. If they cannot come here anymore, we're gonna lose the business anyways. So we can subsidize the public saying, hey, this is what we can do because things are hard right now. I know everything's hard right now financially, but it gives us, the board, Northwood Beach Parks Recreation, some leeway to help out, to increase public relations with everybody else. See, do you see where I'm tracking here?
But the problem with your argument is, is that we could do that with every program expense in here. We could say, what if they can't pay for lifeguards? What if they can't pay for cooking for N W A C? What if they can't pay for this? What if we can't pay, so basically, you would, we would just forget about program costs and we'd just move it all over to M and O.
What is the biggest program that Northwood Beach Parks and Recs, uh, has? Is it the swim team? I mean, the, the biggest profit, the biggest profit that we have that generates income for programs. So the public has to pay for something for the services. What is the biggest program that we have to make?
Somebody has to pay for it. Either the M and O levy pays for it, or.
Well, I got that, I got that. So what is the biggest program expense that we have right now? It looks like it's going to be the, what we're just discussing, the youth instructor, that's swim lessons, that, that includes lap swim, I take it, right?
No, look at life.
No, it doesn't look like a lap swim.
Look at lifeguard.
I'm not, okay, lifeguard, lifeguard is a service that has to be provided because any, anytime somebody swims, lifeguard has to be there, right? That's a safety concern.
Not when N W A C swims.
Okay, when N W A C swims, but there is a qualified lifeguard there to do anything right there just in case an emergency happens, right? Not that we pay for it, nor, the, the district pays for it, but the swim team pays for it because they have the qualified, uh, lifeguard and the CPR and all that stuff that they have to maintain. So we don't pay for it. So that is our biggest one right there, is the youth instructor, right? That has to do with lap swim and everything right there. So when you're going over all these other ones and saying, okay, how about aerobics and all the other instructors and stuff like that, that's a portion of the larger picture that we're going over here of forty one thousand and some change. I would like to see a little bit of leeway, like I mentioned before, to have something that we can do as a board in the district to help out the public. And then the public could help us out.
Which public you talking about? The pet, the people who pay for programs or the people who pay for the levy?
Both.
No, if you put it over the M and O levy, you're putting it on the M and O levy.
Okay, but this is where it gives us leeway, okay, so we're not charging, we don't have to charge, but we could still charge for the swim lessons and everything that we have done in the past.
Okay, when we.
Can we do that?
Let me explain. When, I've sat in on meetings where we talk about what we should ask for various programs. And I've been on those decision-making things. And basically, the board can do what it wants. It doesn't have to represent the total cost. It's, so, in fact, didn't we, the last time we increased the swim, the swim lesson times, wasn't it below what you said it actually was costing to get the people in the water? I can't remember. It seems like we wanted to increase prices again, but it wasn't.
Yes, we were supposed to discuss it, and it was supposed to be increased on January one, we never got around to doing that.
Yes, that's correct. So that's what I remember happening. So we have all the leeway in the world already. We're just trying to say, is it a program expense or is it part of M and O? And I would argue it's, it remains a program expense, but we, the board, can say, no, swimming lessons don't have to cost what it, you know, you don't have to put all of that factors on it that includes the heating of the water and the, all that stuff. You don't have to bring it up to that level. It's like, what do we think is a reasonable level to pay for swim lessons?
I have something.
Yes?
Uh, uh, you know, I, I think we do have a large amount of leeway here, I do. Um, I think an important thing to note is, you know, that, you know, once a year when we set our policy for the year and we set our yearly budget, you know, we expect that our executive director's gonna act within that policy and within that budget. And I think he's, he's done a very good job of doing so. But I think legally speaking, you know, there is, there is no difference between, you know, revenues through the front door or maintenance and operations money. Legally speaking, the director has the leeway to do whatever he needs there. And I think when you're dealing with something as large as the Northwood Beach Recreation District, I think it's very good to have that leeway. And I think as long as the director is acting within the policy guidance that we gave him for the year and our yearly budget, then, then I really think we're, we're being overly limiting in any of this, really.
What's your policy guidance?
Uh, you know, I think my, my policy guidance there is, you know, as a, you know, as a board, our job's to set policy. And his job's to handle day-to-day operations and.
What policy are you talking about?
I think you, you look at all these numbers and this feels like day-to-day operations.
Is there a city, is there a city, uh, director? But I think the, the city hires a guy to, to be like the city director, right?
I think we said the night striders.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, and there's also a board and a mayor. So do they just say, let him do his job and don't, don't put any information or is it, is it part of their job to basically?
What I, what I've been told by, I think all, every, I think what I've been told by every single, uh, city council member is that if Doug Merriman says the sky is purple, the sky is purple. And because of the city, and it was quick Doug's advice, the city, the city just got their bond rating upgraded.
Okay, can we get back to what we're discussing? So, right now, we're discussing the youth instructor, whether it should stay in program expenses or go to M and O. So I think it should stay in program expenses.
You wanna make a motion? We can make a motion.
No, we're already, we're, we're within a motion already, so it's just a matter of, um, do, do three people say, no, it needs to move to M and O? And I, I don't.
Obviously, I don't think so. Okay, so three to two. All right. Running coach, if we, if we get a running coach, I think that would be a program expense.
Yep.
If special events, I think that's a program expense we're charging, and again, um, training. I'm not sure what training was. That's probably just general, overall staff training, correct? I put that in M and O. Lifeguard, uh, again, I put that in, in, uh, direct lane hour expense. Assistant aquatic director, do, do you, does somebody wanna?
I, I would say if we put the aquatic director into M and O, put the assistant aquatic director in M and O, 'cause I don't know what that person does.
I can go along with that. Anybody disagree?
I think it's good.
Okay.
Move both of them to M and O.
Senior lifeguards, I put that in direct lane expense. Head coach, I put that in program expense, um.
I'd like to see that one left up to the director.
That is so obviously an N W A C expense. That's, that's why we're having to do this, because the direct.
I know, I know.
No, I'm, I'm talking to, I'm talking to Commissioner Hofmeyer.
That's why we're here in the first place.
That's, that's why we're here and having to do this, 'cause he does, the director does not agree. And it's so obvious.
Commissioner Rock, how do you feel about that?
Give me a second, put my thoughts here together. 'Cause if we also have the executive director, aquatic director and the head coach, head coach is kind of like a, it's not an instruct, it's not an instructor.
He certainly is. He's a team instructor. What is he, how's he not an instructor?
He's more of a leader in the team. He's a head coach. What, what is a head coach?
He teaches them, he teaches them. That's what his job is.
He's the only coach.
Otherwise, why do we need him?
Okay, so why do we have the, the, I'm just asking a question here. So what, what is the purpose of a head coach?
To instruct, to.
To instruct or to lead?
Instruct.
That's why you have.
We don't need him to lead. We don't need somebody else to lead.
I got that. That, he's the executive director. That's exactly what it is right there. So he's like our head coach, we're like the assistant coach to give him the information to make guidance, right?
No, I think he works, he works for us.
Oh, he works for us, but we give him policy, he does the day-to-day operations, right? Okay, so we're the ones that give him the policy. So as the executive director, if he's gonna be in M and O as the head coach, shouldn't he be in there as well?
No, because the head coach, the only thing he does is N W A C, only thing. And it's like, if, if we didn't have N W A C, we wouldn't have a head coach salary to pay. It, it's that simple.
So two, two for M and O, I'm, we're leaving it in the programs?
Program.
So it's three to two, okay? Assistant coach, if we ever get one, let it deck coaches.
I'm glad we admitted why we're here, though.
Yeah.
How did you not know that?
Anyway, so going on, team administrator, I think the team administrator should be in programs. And here are new, director of maintenance, I think probably we'd put in M and O. Janitorial staff goes in M and O. Shutdown maintenance, M and O. Maintenance assistant, M and O. Executive director's retirement, that should go in M and O.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sorry.
All of those were kind of zeros, that's why I didn't.
Oh, yeah, that, um, let's see.
So executive leave, yeah, I wasn't quite sure. I missed executive leave. There's no cost, there's no.
It's basically the same as comp.
Oh, okay.
You know, you still, doesn't, doesn't anything to your salary. So, yeah, that's how that got left out of there. Uh, executive director's vacation, is that figured at nine point six five or fifteen? You, I thought you said something about fifteen at one time.
It would have a small L and I added to it.
Okay, we'll just leave it at nine six five. Anyway, so I put that in M and O.
Where are we at now? Sorry.
Way down in vacation, because all of those are kind of zeros now.
Right.
But they need categories.
Yeah, they need, they should be categorized in case we have to.
Well, if they take sick pay, does that really add anything to their salary or their cost?
Or it's just different, like they're not, okay?
Yeah, 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 that's.
They can't be re, they can't go, hey, I'm leaving, you owe me the sick pay.
Right, it's not like vacation, it's not something they can save up and get for.
Okay.
Okay. So that's where I skipped all that.
I have a thought here on the executive director.
Okay.
It's not necessarily numbered, but it is. I look at all these numbers. I'm a building agent, I build houses. I don't know if we want to go around the room and say what our jobs are. I, I think I know, I, I think I know you're enlisted in the Navy, and I don't think anybody else wants to ask you any questions. We have an executive director who was hired with this business acumen, he's the numbers guy. If we're gonna sit here and do his job for him, I don't know why we're gonna pay a salary. This is either the, this, this is the silliest overreach I've ever seen by a board, or it is the dumbest place the money goes.
Okay, you're interrupting the flow and we have.
You said that about thirty million times, and we don't have to say it again.
And everything that's been here keeps getting said, too.
Thank you.
Okay, continue, vacation.
Executive director, I put in there, so maintenance supervisor.
Do we wanna move aquatics director also to M and O?
Oh, yeah, 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 sorry. Yeah, let's move that over to, uh, let's move that, sorry, yeah, skip it again. Move that over. And the head coach is still leaving programs. And then, let's see, maintenance supervisor, uh, I put in M and O. Um, let's see, that was a vacation, those are totals.
Okay, so.
Payroll taxes, he, he, I already covered that with a nine point six five percent or the fifteen percent, which is thirteen percent plus two percent payroll processing.
So that, that basically depends on whether the person, on the person?
Yeah, so that doesn't need to go, that doesn't need to be added because.
Okay.
Cell phone, that's directors, that's four eighty, I mean, that's, um, that's, uh, M and O. Uh, employee uniforms, I felt those probably mostly lifeguards, so I put those in lane. It's not a big expense. Medical, I divide those, that one up because one of them is for the coach and the other one is for director of maintenance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, then going on down, uh, A R C equipment, I, 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 I put this, just because he might be buying equipment. That's American Red Cross, would that not be buying for something for the teaching the class?
It is, but you usually, we always get that money back, 'cause the people have to pay for it, so it's.
You get, you get all this money back in programs.
Yeah, okay.
So, aquatics director.
What about major equipment purchase?
Oh, yeah.
Should be in M and O.
Yeah, you're right, missed that one. Thank you.
Yeah, and I think as a volunteer board that puts a few hours a month into something, I think we're gonna miss a lot of things. You know, I've heard several times that I, that I assume that this is what this is for, or I don't know, and that's, that's not saying anything bad about it.
Okay, you're interrupting the, you're interrupting the flow again, just to tell us how silly we're being. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, aquatics equipment, uh, I put in program expenses.
Well, 'cause I was trying to think, what are aquatics equipment? And I think that's the stuff, a lot of the stuff that's like noodles and flippy things, right? And so some of it's used for, I think lane swimmers use some of it, 'cause it'd be like weights and stuff, and some of it's used for open swim. So I would wonder if we should put that in direct lane hour expenses, because it's used in the pool by several different programs, is my understanding.
Including the swim team.
I don't, I don't know that the swim team uses it.
They don't use any of the little, little kickboards, the little.
Oh, okay, so, yeah.
Most of them I think have their own stuff.
I would think they have their own.
Which uses some of it sometimes, too.
They, they have.
So I figured most of it was in programs and the, the amount of people that.
Okay.
Anyway, I just, that's why.
Okay.
The program.
All right, leave it there, then.
I mean, sometimes, you're right, some of it breaks out two different ways, but I took where I thought the majority of it went.
And it is in program, I just don't know how to. And it is in program. I just don't know how to divide it up, that's all.
Retail expense, I put in M and O, because I think we get that back. Isn't that like buying candy and cokes and?
These, this is like bottles and things like that.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, all right. Aerobics supplies, I think that goes in, in the programs.
Aerobics.
Huh?
Aerobics.
Yeah, yeah, okay. And then cleaning sanitation goes in M and O. The first aid goes in M and O. Event food, I think we're usually charging for these events, at least a little something. Some of them, some of them are free, but, so anyway, I put that in programs. It's not a big deal. Sixty-five bucks. Um, office supplies, that goes in M and O. Pool chemicals goes in M and O. Pool supplies, if we ever, that's in M and O. And let's see here, hmm, anyway, oh, because I summed this all up at the end. I'd rather than breaking that out. I just took the, the whole total for swim team total, which was twenty-one, three oh one seventy-two, and put that in program. Um, fuel connect, M and O. Vehicle licensing, M and O. Vehicles, M and O. And, actually, uh, twenty point three three should probably be eliminated, because that's tot, in that total, that's six oh one oh five.
Yeah, it's a total.
So, so you should take the two, that part out. You see what I'm saying? Executive Director. Huh? Okay, thank you. Um, concession expense, is that the, that's the coke and candies and stuff, then? Okay, so I put that in program expenses. We're going to get it as a program. I know it's a kind of a slippery, but it's a, but we're, we're, it's something we're getting paid back for, I think.
Yeah, yeah. As long as the money that comes, pays for it, goes back into that, um, to offset those program expenses, okay?
Yeah, it actually more than does that.
All right.
From what I was told.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Small tools, M and O. Uh, kayak equipment should go under programs. Uh, minor purchases, uh, other, I didn't know what that meant, but I just put that in M and O. Um, total other service, that should be total, so that doesn't need, that, that doesn't, that zero doesn't need to be there. Um, so Barracuda backup, that's for, that's for backing up our computers, right? That needs to be in M and O, I think. Uh, web hosting, M and O. Training course tuition, um, is that, huh?
That's staff training, that's not.
Staff training, okay.
Matt just went to the C P O.
Okay, that's what that is. So, that would be in M and O. Then, so move that over to M and O. I T services, that would be, I think, in M and O. P O S, what's that stand for, system?
It's the point of sale system.
It's a credit card.
Okay, that one should be in M and O. Employee background checks, M and O. Credit card processing, M and O. Account, accounting consultant, M and O. Security system, M and O. Bank fees, M and O. Computer maintenance, M and O. Copy machine, M and O. Dues of membership, I think that's, that's not N W A C. That's basically like belonging to what?
It's the A R C and the, um, American Red Cross and the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, okay, M and O. Um, health and safety, A R C. What, what is that?
Well, I tried to ask that question before I came over here to verify it, but I, I, I don't have an answer.
Okay. Okay, so, in time be, for time being, we'll leave it there, but it could be moved over to M and O.
I, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's a, does it have something to do with the training, though?
That's what I was thinking it was.
Because it's American Red Cross.
American Red Cross, so, I mean, does that have something to do with training the lifeguard? I don't know.
How about, continue, I'll see if I can't get a response from.
Okay, or maybe the answer is, if it, if it has to do with training the lifeguard, to leave it where it is.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, okay.
Yeah, but it has, yeah. H Vacs, H VAC preventive maintenance, that was, that would be M and O. Landscape maintenance, M and O. Legal, if we ever need it, M and O. Payroll processing, I've, I've already got that covered, so we don't have that in there. Pest control, M and O. And email, M and O. Advertising, now that's a little different. I think, I think, I put that in programs, because I figured most of it's for some, some program, whether it's either for swim school, N W A C, or whatever. Is that correct?
It's for district, but the programs are probably, it's anything we do.
All right, so I'm going to leave that in programs.
I, I got a thing, I've, I got a problem with that, especially with the levy coming up. Um, I don't know what program we think's going to pay for the advertising with the levy coming up.
Well, actually, nothing from the district can pay for the levy whatsoever.
I, I agree, but we, we can still get out information on pamphlets on what we are and what we offer.
Not, not out of our funds.
No.
Yes, sir.
Well, I believe we'll have them down there, have them happen, and just begin, there's a cost.
Okay.
By, by, by having a pamphlet of what we are and who we are, what we offer, we're, we're not pushing for the levy. We're not mentioning the levy.
Okay, as long as the levy, yeah, and, and it is true, and also, if we have to advertise for a certain position or something, that's, that's going to take advertising. So, the advertising is kind of all over the place?
But most of that comes out of the Xerox machine, and our paper that we use for Xerox machine. Not, not brochures and not, uh, posters and so on and so forth. Those are the, those are the advertising expenses. This is the, the, the Xeroxing and the.
I don't disagree with that.
Comes out of the M and O expenses. We already covered that.
I would like to leave him more room on that.
Huh? The N W A C swim team posters.
Paid for by the boosters, though.
And, and the brochures that were standing out there are paid for.
The brochures are paid for by us.
Okay, so.
I'd like to see that one moved.
To M and O?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
I'm sorry, advertising to M and O, is that what's?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just, that's just one of those iffy cat.
Exactly. And I know it's a small, I know it's a pretty small number here, but if he goes, there's need for something else.
No, agreed.
Thank you.
Well, the two of us think so. Does anyone, is there a third?
I think it's good.
Okay. Good to move it?
Good, move it.
Okay.
Okay, internet telephone, third to.
Executive Director's got a, uh, question.
I have a response, all right. Um, health and safety are, kind of, it's babysitting lifeguard class.
Okay, so that would say program.
It would be a program, right.
Okay, thank you. Travel, I think it's the coaches, or not the coaches' travel, that's, um.
Joanne going down to county.
City staff travel.
Yeah.
Outside of the travel.
So, that's, that's program, or M and O. Uh, insurance, M and O. Boiler, M and O. Electricity, M and O. C D P water, M and O. Patron water, M and O. Pool water, garbage, M and O. Kind of strange that they're both putting together pool, water, and garbage. Anyway, spa boiler, M and O. And utilities, other would be M and O. I'm not sure what that's supposed to eventually cover, but anyway. And then Clover Valley Ballpark, M and O. Uh, Clover Valley Dog Park, M and O. Northwest Park and Recreation District Repair and Maintenance, M and O. Uh, miscellaneous, M and O. I didn't know what that was. And, uh, yeah, there was a zero there for employee advisory service. We're going to talk about that later. Actually, that was a hundred and fifty dollars, though. You got, you got, you got it down as a zero. I thought it was one fifty.
Well, last year, nothing was spent on it.
And I think we had, I think we took it down to twenty, or it was something like that, I think. We, and we're still talking about it, so.
So, so last year, we didn't, we didn't have that last year? This, just started this year?
We had it.
The cost occurs every two years, so.
Because it was on the, it was on the P and L, I think, for last year, a hundred and fifty bucks.
Well, this is the, the numbers you're using here are the actuals, so it might have been on there as nine hundred, which is what it was the last time.
Okay.
Yeah.
It won't be nine hundred the next time.
No, it was a hundred and fifty. The apply, employee advisory, isn't that that thing with the psychiatry, psychology stuff? That's not the same thing?
I call them after every meeting, yes.
Yeah, okay, that, and it, it had it on the P and L, a hundred and fifty bucks. Anyway, I'll look it up again. Election services, that's going to cost us this year, but it did last year, so, uh, government services fees, M and O, and that's, that's what?
It's a, it's, it could be.
Yeah, okay. Refunds, I figured, well, I'm not sure where to put that, but I just put it in M and O. Because what are we, I didn't know what we were refunding. It was probably from, was it probably from programs, actually?
Didn't say the fast majority of it.
It, you know, it does, let's, that should be moved into programs, probably.
All right. Anybody disagree? Okay, moving on. Intergovernmental services, programs, uh, non-aquatic recreational program, hmm, I don't know what that was. Well, that's, it's not the running club, so I don't know, anyway.
What, do you know, what, do you know what non-aquatic recreation program would be?
Special events that we do.
Oh, like doctor, doctor daughter, um, dad-daughter dance. Okay, okay.
Yeah, we kind of charge for that, though, don't we?
Yes.
Well, that zero there doesn't go, it's the next line down, the total, the next one down.
Ah, the special, okay, so, the one that's zero is not really there.
It's not there.
Okay.
So, we'll just eliminate that one completely. And then, uh, professional services, or no, porta potty, excuse me, porta potty.
I thought that got moved.
Well, it did, but this is last year's, you know.
Good, good point, okay.
So, it's going to be M and O. And anyway, so, it comes down, and you come down, and you add all those up, and you get, uh, you know, a hundred ninety-nine, three fifty-five, eighty-four for direct lane hour expenses, two twenty-five, nine eleven, seventy-two for, for the, uh, program expenses, four ninety-seven, two thirty-four. And, and obviously, that's going to, these are going to change a little bit, because we moved some stuff. Anyway, so, going back to, so, I tried to, I took all this, so I took, and, and I came up with, uh, so the swim team deficit for two thousand sixteen, and it came up with, uh, from, from this, including, and then, and then adding these, was nineteen, two thirty-five, and from the C S S, um, only, no lifeguards, uh, not including Saturday, I came up with a twelve thousand four hundred and eight. So, two together was a deficit for the swim team of thirty-one, six forty-three. I did the same thing for lap swim. Actually, I, because I didn't, I, I couldn't figure out how much, how much we're charging, or how much average we got from a lap swim. I averaged it out. I, I sort of guesstimated three ninety-nine we're averaging. And I, and I multiplied three ninety-nine times eight, eight oh seven zero, which is the number of lane hours you calculated, which came out to thirty-two, one ninety-nine. We took in forty-seven, four fifty. That means we had a deficit of lap swim of fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars, using that three ninety-nine figure. If I, if, if we eventually raise it, which I think we should, if we raise, eventually gets raised to six dollars an hour, times eight, eight oh seven zero, it comes out to forty-eight, four twenty, that would have, that, this, this year, if, again, this is the future, but if I, we were charging that this year, we would have gotten forty-eight, four twenty, which would have covered the forty-seven, so, which would have covered the deficit. Anyway, right, so, my whole reason for doing this was to give N W A C an, an answer to their question, how much is the deficit? And that's how I came up with my answer. I haven't seen N W A C come up with anything yet, to try and shake in your head.
Are you talking to me, sir?
Yes, sir, you're shaking.
No, do not.
After you're minding my own business, you should be ashamed of yourself to engage a person in the public. I am conducting myself as a responsible young man. You address me, you owe me an apology.
I apologize.
Then don't talk to me again, please.
I won't.
Thank you.
Yeah, don't address the public, especially when we're not talking.
Now, you see, officer, how that, that.
Yeah, I pounded the table.
Can we please stop?
No, you.
Come on, stop!
You attacked a person in the public.
Stop! Yes, stop!
Did you attack me?
He didn't attack you.
Yes, he did. I feel attacked, the same way you felt attacked.
No, you don't.
Yes, I do.
Okay, we are, we are conducting a meeting. We will not address the public. He already apologized. Continue. So, um, what else did you want to say, Commissioner Fort?
Nothing else.
All right. So, I didn't write down the exact, it was moved and seconded that we accept Commissioner Fort's, what did you say? Sorry, I didn't write it down.
I, I didn't, I didn't.
That we accept Commissioner Fort's.
Are we not having any discussion?
What?
Are we not having any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Sorry, I thought that was the discussion, but, okay. So, we've gone through the list and we have, um, assigned, so, further discussion. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm still trying to ascertain why we're trying to attribute cost to N W A C that the director says they're not responsible for. Costs that aren't, such as the C S S or.
And, and I know you agree with him. I don't. Commissioner Fort does not. I don't believe Commissioner Singleton agrees as well. So, three of us don't agree. We think the N W A C head coach is absolutely an N W A C expense and.
I wasn't disputing that. I'm, I'm getting into the, the C S S, though, and the lifeguards and stuff like that. That's why I just, I, I don't understand that. You know, when you're seeing those get added, the number in much deficit doubled. And I just, you know, the, the director says that the C S S and lifeguards aren't for N W A C, so I don't know why they're on there.
I got that directly from the director's calculations.
That looks a lot different to his numbers.
I'm talking about the C S S and all the other numbers.
I think that's when he was just running the numbers across the board for everybody, though. And now I think you're trying to double charge it like for something, is how I felt.
Well.
Disagree.
I, I tried to come up with what I thought the number was. That was, that's my opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Frost.
On this, um, go home my responses to the closing remarks.
We don't have closing remarks tonight.
Tonight? Okay. Can you just give me for right now?
Yes, we can. Commissioner Singleton.
Um, I just wanted to say that I don't technically, I, I don't think we need to have, I, I, I disagree with having directly in our expenses and, and M and O separate. Um, I, you know, we've had that discussion before. Um, in, I, I, I have a slightly different philosophy about it, but, um, I, I, I mean, if it's, if, if it's this or nothing, then I'll go with this. But I, I personally think that some of these would be considered overhead, and, and again, I, I know that we have terminology differences, um, but some of the direct lane hour expenses would just be considered overhead. But that's, um, again, if it's this or nothing, then I'll support this.
Even, even, you had other ones, even the ones that we moved over to, M and O.
Mm-hmm. It's a different, it's, it's a different, it's a slightly different philosophy, but again, if it's this or nothing, then I'll go with this. I, I don't, I don't, um, there's nothing that I feel is, um, is wrong. I just, I, um, I just would prefer to do it a different way, but I'll do it this way, okay? Do, do you understand what I mean? That's, I, I just wanted, because that's, I did it a slightly different way, and that's, because that's the way I see it.
Are all the things that are on this list as a direct lane hour expense, would those be in M and O for you?
They would, and that overage would be how you would calculate lane hour time. But again, I'll accept this.
Yeah, and see, I, when you throw it all in there, and then you try to average, I can't figure that out. So, anyway, I try, I tried to, I tried to sort of open it all up, so that the average, non-economic person could sort of understand what's going on, where, where I'm thinking, where my thoughts are coming from.
And for me, it's the exact opposite, in that I, for me, and, and it's, we think differently, and that's okay. It's just, I, for me, it's, you've actually made it a little more complicated. Um, and so, the, the little bit of risk, um, that comes from this strategy is that if any of those M and O expenses, if I can just finish, um, if any of those M and O expenses, um, fluctuate too greatly, then they technically wouldn't be covered. So, that's the, that's the danger.
But I asked you, can you give me a number for what you think the deficit for the N W A C team is? Can you give me a number of what you think the deficit for lap swim is? And you couldn't do it out of your system, and, and, and I can't.
But I, I feel like you're getting, I, I feel like, and I, I think the reason why that is, is because we have different objectives here. Mine was to categorize things, and that's what I thought the, the exercise was.
My whole, no, my, I, I.
Well, it was for me.
Right, right at the beginning, I said, back in January, or, or, there's, one of the N W A C members asked us to give a number. And that was my whole objective here, to give them a number.
And it happens either way, but it's, uh, sure, I mean, it's, I, I think you and I are going to have to just agree to disagree, and that's okay.
Donna?
Yeah.
I, I am very uncomfortable with this. I, I hope that the situation wouldn't arise where I had to vote for it. However, if it was what we've talked about, or what Commissioner Singleton's talked about, I'm much more comfortable with that, and I, I would hope nobody puts me there, but I would be willing to be there if I had to be.
With what?
I would be willing to support Wendy's motion if I had to, because I think there's much more leeway there than, than where we're at. And then the only other, the only other thing I really had is, this is very large. I'd like to hear from the director on it if we could. I know we might not agree with him on everything, but I thought he might have some insight.
Okay, since you want to hear from him.
Commissioner Fort and I sat for an hour and a half or so yesterday going through this and then. So I understand his, and I understand, uh, what Commissioner Fort has submitted or brought out at the last meeting, because I did go through that as well. My, I only have two kinds of revenue, program or levy revenue. So having a line, a column here called direct lane expenses doesn't, it doesn't equate to two streams of revenue to now having three streams of expense, in my view. So, uh, one or the other, you know, I can have, to me, it's what goes into program and what goes into overhead or levy or O and N, whatever term you want to use. I use overhead because to me it's a simple term, but I don't know, um, I don't have three streams of revenue, so I, I don't know why I would have three expense line, or three expense lines on here.
Can I, let me ask a question. My understanding was that direct lane hour expenses actually is a program expense?
It, it is in a sense, except that there's two programs that probably don't use any instructors out of programs. That's open swim and lap swim. So I was trying to show what it would cost per lane hour to have lap swim and open swim. Now, open swim gets a whole bunch of people in there, they don't need to charge that six dollars an hour. They get more than one person per lane, you see what I'm saying? So, so there's probably going to be, the, the, the open swim is going to be probably half of what the lane swim. But that's where I came out, because I don't think open swim and lap, lap swim should be paying for the aquatics director, I mean, not the aquatics, the, the aerobics instructor, the N WAC coach, the, uh, kayak instructor, or any of the other instructors, because they don't use them. So that gives you that basic lane hour expense just for going in there and swimming, and that's what I said. And then you add, you take that six dollars and you add whatever the aerobic instructor's salary is, and add that on to, or the kayak instructors, and you, how many lanes, and that's how you come up, that's.
I, I fully understand your methodology.
Uh-huh.
I, I don't dispute any of that, um, but there are two kinds of, of expenses. There are program, and in my view, and based on my experience, program is anyone whose job, entire salary, or the time that they're on the clock involves people in the water, that's a program expense. That's, that's my, a simple view. And then, of course, any of the expenses that go along with those programs would, would come under there too. Mostly I'm talking about people. If you're a supervisor, if you have a role where you are, you are running a department, like I have people, then your time that isn't spent as an instructor or spent up at the front desk, like I have my client service director, I have her doing hours at, at the front desk, and that's charged out of the CSS time, not out of her, um, director time. And the aquatics director is a lifeguard instructor and, and all the things, and she's a swim instructor and all those. So, so that time spent there is program time, the rest of it, in my view, is, is overhead time. And that's how I separate, based on my business experience, what is program and what is overhead. I, the only place on here where I, I, I differ with most of you people is, is in the, is in who's in where. The, the rest of it, when you get down to the, the consulting fees and all that, I don't have really a, a difference of opinion. It's in the, that's in the upper part, and that's why I'm trying to make my point there. My way, and as I said to you yesterday, and I'll say, so I know Commissioner Frost hasn't been to, uh, the meetings where we discussed about this, or the one meeting, there's no, the way that Commissioner Singleton brought forward, the way you brought it forward, in my way, there's no wrong way. But mine's the way I did it for a reason. If I'm able to use this thing that I call overhead to help, so you have people who come in and use the, the facility, contribute to the reduction of the reliance on this levy money, the M and O money, that allows us to raise the reserve account much faster than either of these other two ways will do it. And that, that's just, that's the way I've been doing it, the way I've done it, not out of anything else. This, different businesses make different decisions on how they want to do stuff all the time, uh, what, how they want to recover different costs. That's a business decision, and that's what you guys are deciding right here. So that's my view to, I, I don't know if you were looking for something in, in specific, but I'm addressing the discussion that's occurred here tonight with a little bit of why I approached it, the way I approached it, because I think we're going to build up a reserve quicker my way when everyone has a, you know, that lane charge copied the way I do. So that's, thank you for giving me an opportunity to.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I mean, given, given that, um, about two streams of revenue, and, and therefore also two kind of buckets, if you will, for expenses, I, I mean, I think it's, he said it a lot better than I did. Um, I, I think all these things that, you, you can call them whatever you want, but I think all these things that are in direct lane hour expenses really kind of belong in that M and O bucket. The, the difference is, is that that number exceeds, um, the, the levy, and then there's recovery that is required. That's, that's the difference. Um, but there is recovery required either way, right? So, I mean, that, that's, again, that's.
So we're, we're, you made a motion in the past about the N WAC had to come, had to come up and show that by a certain date, they could have a budget neutral, um, contribution to pay for all their expenses. But you have not yet been able to tell me what you think their deficit is, how much they have to come up with.
What I'm, what I'm trying to do right now, which is the exercise.
I haven't, wasn't done yet, so, that's what I was trying to do, was trying to give them an answer as to how much they have to come up with. That was the question that came up a long time ago, and that's what I did. I, I know you've done yours, and, but you can't answer, you, you weren't able to tell me a specific number. That's the number they want.
And with all.
Otherwise, how can we make a motion to ask them to, if we can't answer that question?
And with all due respect, you, you have, I've, my apologies if this offends you, but you have stated that same opinion several times yourself, and I heard you every single time.
Okay.
I believe that this exercise is intended overall for us to determine each item on this list where it belongs. It, it's, it's simple math, and I apologize if that offends anybody either, but it's simple math after that to get to that. So to me, that's really a result, it's not part of the exercise. And, and so all I'm trying to, to say is that I think that these things in this left column of numbers, direct lane hour expenses, would be considered, because to, to the executive director's point, he said that he'd, he can't, so if, if we're looking at those things as costs, there is absolutely no way, because we don't measure some of those things, um, we can't measure the revenue equivalents, right? We don't have an open swim line on our, we have, we have admissions. So, so there is, so, so his point is really valid about, um, there, there's no comparison to then add and subtract to say, are we, did we, did we recover all of this, um, because of the way that we look at our revenue? I mean, does that, does that mean, you know, that we have to do it the way that I'm suggesting? There are certainly other ways to do it, but I believe it's the simplest way.
The problem is, is that neither one of those that I can tell can tell me how much we should charge for each program.
And, and my, um, response to you when we had this.
You can tell what the total is, but not what, what each individual program is.
And I was trying to answer the question, which is, there's a difference between cost and price. And, and therefore, well, it, that, that's actually, I mean, in any business, that distinction is really an, an important one, because some of what I heard from these two is that they would like to see potential incentives, which would mean that at some times we would charge a price that we wouldn't necessarily recover the cost. That's what I heard you two say, right? And, and so in this case, we're looking at, we're trying to look at, you know, you're looking at what the cost of things is. That doesn't necessarily mean what the price of them is, right? Uh, that's a separate, I mean, you know, that's, that's a separate calculation, and I know, and I know you've kind of tried to cover a lot of that yourself, and I understand that. And I, I think some of it is getting back to, um, where, I mean, seriously, I, to me, it's where did, what bucket do these things belong in? And, and I'm, I'm not trying to be insistent, I just, that's what I think the exercise is.
Let her, let her.
I'm, I'm done.
Okay.
I, I just got a quick question right there. Who determines price for programs, for what, what is charged? If I, if I were the public, I came in to do lap swim, who's in charge of saying, I'm going to pay this amount of money for me to do lap swims?
This board.
This board. So we give the price to the executive director, and then he puts it out.
It's, in the last time that we raised prices, um.
We agreed with it, I got that.
Yeah. Commissioner Singleton and I sat down, I went and went to all the pools, see what they charged. I tried to figure out what, what the expenses were, and we said, this is what we recommend, and the board made decisions.
So we, we as a board recommend, okay, this is the prices that we have.
Yeah. And I would think if, if the director also can come forward, and I know that it's been happening in the past, the director comes forward and says, we need to increase prices, this is what I recommend, or we need to cut prices, this is what I recommend. It's, you know, but the board is the one, he makes the final decision.
Okay. So anybody can make a recommendation, the board, I, I got that right there, so.
Got it.
We are the ones that determine the price on all those ones right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, um, just so everyone remembers, um, we have no clue how much people are paying for their aerobics sessions. We don't know how much they're paying necessarily for their lap swim, because they can buy annual passes, and, you know, depending on how often they use it, they might pay twenty dollars if they bought a, an annual pass and they come, very rarely, they'll pay twenty dollars a session for their lap swim. Or they come every day, they pay seventy-eight cents for their aerobics lesson, or they, you know.
That's like any business that you have.
You know.
I go to the gym.
And that's the problem, is like, we can't, that's why it's those programs.
Why couldn't we have separate sign-in sheets for lap swim, aerobics?
They do, aerobics, people do sign in.
They have a separate sign-in sheet?
They do, the problem is you don't know how much they're paying.
Well, you could mark it, you could have a column for.
It does have, it does have.
That's kind of.
Oh, it does, oh, okay, okay.
That's kind of saying like, because I, I have a membership to the gym, I don't use base gym. I pay twenty-two dollars a month for, doesn't matter what the heck I want to use it for, I come in five times a day. Or I don't have to go in there at all, maybe once a month or something like that, so I'm paying the director.
Twenty-two dollars for one visit.
I don't think it should be, we should determine who, okay, this guy is using only once, so we're going to charge some, uh, a certain amount, vice this person's using it because they were, they had foresight to buy annual pass. That's like saying, okay, if I want to get cheaper gym price, I'm going to pay in advance seventy-five percent of the year for the gym to get a twenty-five percent discount, and I can use as much as I would if I were to pay twenty-two dollars a, a month for using it more or less, it doesn't make a difference.
I'm just telling you, we don't, we don't have a clue how much people have paid, that's all.
But that's, that's like saying like the gym analysis, I was, I was just saying right there, it's like, if I was foresight to buy annual pass, which is cheaper than buy, buy lanes, right, buy a lap swim, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, so if we have those right there, why are we going to be charging more or less for people that are only doing it once or twice? So.
Yes, I got an answer for that.
Yeah.
It's to cover the out-of-district people. Uh, the out-of-district people don't pay the levy.
I got that, I got.
So, so we basically have a, and, and I talked, I think I talked to the director about this, didn't I, remember? I said that, you know, the lane, that's six dollars, obviously, and you're right. And we, we need to talk about what's going to be the average, but, because that's, but, because people who come, who, who, people who come, we don't check people who just come in for one time, we don't check their ID to see if they're in district or out of district, we charge them the same rate. If they come in, if they buy a, a punch card, annual pass, quarter pass, anything like that, we check their ID to see if they're in district, we charge them an in-district rate, or if they're out of district, they get charged about ten percent more to cover the levy.
I got that.
That's, so that's how, that's how that comes about.
Okay. I'm, 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 like I said, it's just, it seems like one person is being charged more because they want to do, buy, like, one at a time, buy somebody that's doing the annual right there.
I just told you why that is.
Yeah, it's, I, I got the whole in-district, out-of-district stuff right there, but if you got the in-district doing that.
Well, it's, it's a common business practice.
Yeah.
That is like, if you buy this annual pass and then you'll save money, except the annual pass people, a lot of times, don't use it every day. I know, I was one of those.
Commissioner, the, what, what you're talking about, is it something we're forcing on them?
Yeah.
It's something that they make a choice. So swimmers make a choice to come in, like Commissioner Fort comes in, and he makes a choice to pay like a visit. He could, if he wanted to, and, and wasn't a military retiree, let's say he was just a retired doctor, civilian, he could come in and buy a pass and do that, and he would make the, so the individual, I think, is what, who makes the economic decision for themselves on whether or not they're going to pay twenty-two dollars or buy a pass and then, oh, I only showed up twice a month and I really ain't got my money.
And, and we talked about this, we've been, you and I have both been to other pools where they actually check, each person that comes in there has to show, prove whether they're in district or not in district. But we, I don't think we do it because it's a pain in the neck for just each individual.
It's our, our people have told us that, that they said it's too cumbersome.
So basically, the way we, we have corrected for that is by charging this flat rate that covers basically out-of-district costs, and if somebody's in district and doesn't want to bother coming in and buy it, and then they just want to come in occasionally, well, they're going to, they're going to pay a little bit extra. And that's just basically because we don't want to be checking ID passes for, for individual person coming in.
So it's our choice to not, not like that right there.
It was a management choice, and I kind of agree with it.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I move to amend my motion.
Okay.
To accept the discussed changes and to move the direct lane hour expense items into M and O.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
So it's moved and seconded to accept Commissioner Fort's methodology, but to, I'm sorry, would you read that again?
Sure, to accept the discussed changes and move the direct lane hour expenses to the M and O category.
Okay. Um, anyone need further discussion on this one, moving directly in our expenses into M and O?
Executive Director has.
Oh, yes.
Whereas I, I agree with everything, but I'm, my suggestion and recommendation is lifeguards aren't M and O. Lifeguards should be program, senior lifeguards and lifeguards, and, and I would say even the, um, even the C at the client service specialists. Everything else I don't have a, an issue with, but that's just my recommendation. I'm not voting for, I'm just calling the recommendation.
Okay. Um, so, does anyone agree with the director and want to move the lifeguards into program expenses out of M and O?
Yeah, I think it gets that number more down to size.
Which number?
The, uh.
The M and O number?
The amount that we would need to recover.
Okay, so you would like to make that change. Does anybody else agree that that's a good change? Or would you like to leave the lifeguards in M and O?
I think that's a good idea.
So two for, anyone else? Okay. So, um, any other discussion on the motion?
There's an amendment on the table.
Yes, with the amendment, with your amendment, that, the one you're talking about, right? Because that fail, the one, we're not moving lifeguards, we're going to.
Seems like we have two, two motions.
She had made the mo, the original motion, and she put in, she amended her motion, and then he wanted to, in the discussion, he wanted to move the lifeguards from M and O back into, not back into program, but into program expenses as opposed to M and O. And it didn't, it didn't get three people wanting to do that, so we're gonna leave lifeguards in M and O.
Unless you were, unless you were what matters, right?
No.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded that we accept Commissioner Fort's methodology and accept the discussed changes that we made tonight with the, also with direct lane hour expenses being moved into the M and O column. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay?
Nay.
Do you have a vote? Do you understand what, I, it's a, it's a difficult.
I, I.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I was, I was clear, sorry.
Clicking, and the gears are, and they're clicking, right there, so. Can we do more discussion? Or my, my, my thoughts.
I asked for more discussion, so.
My, my thoughts on this, I should say. So.
Uh, no, we, we, we called the vote because some, nobody else has said, said they had anything to discuss, and we have to get out of here in a half an hour, so.
It will be quick, it's two minutes. If you, the board.
Okay, go ahead, two minutes.
Okay. First of all, I apologize to the board and the public, I missed a couple of meetings, that is my fault, I should let you know, I'm having some issues in my life right now, but that's no excuse right there, just want to apologize for that, missing the meetings on all these ones right here. So I'm not really familiar with what was going on in the past few meetings and all that, and just from listening to here, there's been some issues with the board, the public, and pretty much everybody that's involved with this one right here. Now, I do appreciate Commissioner Fort, Commissioner Shingleton. Still, brain's still moving there. So I appreciate the way the budget, or the, this methodology is actually being used right there. My thoughts is, I think it's a waste of the board's time and the public's time, because it is not really our job to say where something goes for funds, to tell you the truth. I think that is day-to-day operations, and that should be the executive director's decision on how the budget is going. We just make policy and procedure, and we tell them what we want for, what the public wants. I got that right there, that's my thought on there. But what I'm also saying is, I'm highly disappointed in the board, in the whole commissioning board right here, is because, first of all, we're here to help the public to get what everybody wants right there. Seems like we're more fighting with each other.
Okay, sorry, you were supposed to be talking about this.
I, I am talking about this right here.
It does, sounds like you're getting off.
I'm, I'm.
If you want, if you want to talk about how bad a job the board is doing that you haven't attended for several weeks, you can talk about it at the next regular meeting.
No, I'm, I'm getting to, I'm getting there, so just please.
You said you were gonna take two minutes, and you've taken more than two minutes.
Thirty more seconds, I promise.
All right.
So with this right here, because, um, we're doing this one right here, we're fighting against ourselves, is what we are, we're fighting against ourselves, we have a whole bunch of different things that we're trying to fight with for ourselves, we're making snide remarks, we're making, uh, everything right there, making it, everything difficult for us to do. And I get, understand where, when we come up with something like this, the public is gonna come up and say, hey, what the hell's going on? We're asking them questions, we're asking them what they think, or what numbers, or how much do you think that they gotta do, where we're the actual ones that are supposed to saying, hey, this is the information that we have from the public and the executive director and the board of what it should be. We're fighting against each other. And like I said, I'm disappointed in all of us, including myself, not saying, hey, this is something that we have to work together on, and not bickering against each other, bickering against the public, making everybody mad. And I see this with pretty much everybody here, interrupting and all that other stuff. So that is just my thought, and I appreciate you letting me get that on my chest.
Okay, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Aye. And the chair votes aye. So I think it's four ayes, but let's, I go by Commissioner Shingleton.
Aye.
Commissioner Frosch.
Aye.
Commissioner Fort. Commissioner Hoffmeyer. And chair votes aye, four to one. So methodology is accepted, and, all right. Next meeting is next Wednesday, the scheduled time is supposed to be six o'clock, but we'll...
We're gonna run into the groups coming up there, and my column is, I've got staff we, we had moved forward, but we might be safe if we stay 6:30, it shouldn't be more than like an hour meeting, go check.
If, if you find out, you know, when, when we can't, okay. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'm going to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's moving to a second, if we adjourn, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair agrees, unanimous decision, we are adjourned at 20:37, or 8:37. And.